Good evening. Welcome, thank you for joining us. This is the Thursday, June 6th, City Council meeting for the Playmaker Community of the Year. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Mr. Miskaman?
Here.
Mayor Abu Asli?
Here.
Ms. Menser?
Here.
Mr. Brant?
Mr. Sterned?
Here.
This time I have a moment of silence. Thank you. Before our public forum this evening, I want to read the procedures for all public forums. Anyone wishing to address the council should fill out the yellow card that can be found at the podium at the end of the staff table. Please complete and turn that into the city clerk when you come forward to speak. Please do not approach the dais. If you have handouts, submit them to the city clerk for distribution to the council. You're encouraged to state your name and your group affiliation, if any. Please remember that all people addressing council have five minutes to make their comments. Please refrain from engaging in conduct or speech that is eminently threatening, that incites violence, or which is obscene. Please avoid disparaging any individual, stick to the issue of concern. Please avoid repeating comments or points that have been made by other people. Speakers should not engage in conduct that disrupts the orderly progress of the meeting or engage in speech or conduct which interferes with the other people's ability to participate in this meeting. Failure to adhere to these guidelines may result in removal from the meeting. Appreciate everyone abiding by these procedures. And we'll have our first public forum at this time, which is a time set aside for comments from members of the public on any topic that is listed on the agenda but not associated with the public hearing. There will be a second public forum towards the end of the meeting, at which time people can address the council on any topic. But at this time, we'll take comments to the council on any topic that is on the agenda but not associated with the public hearing. If there's anyone here to address council, please come forward. Okay, seeing no one is coming forward, we will close this part of the meeting and proceed to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as follows. This will be items A1 through F2, Resolutions 31960 through 31970.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, including items A1 through F2, Resolutions 31960 through 31970. Discussion. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, signify by saying no. Okay, the motion is approved. For the next section of the agenda, I will turn over the meeting to the Mayor Protam.
Mayor Protam, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abu Asli's abstention. This will include items C1 through E1 and resolution numbers 31971 through 31972.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abu Asli's abstention as follows. Items C1 through E1, Resolutions 31971 to 31972. Any discussion? Take a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with one abstention. Turn it back to the mayor.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution Number 31973, approving contract with Toter for automated collection garbage recycling and yard waste carts and authorizing payment in the amount not to exceed $1,800,000.
Second? I'm moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 31973, approving the contract with Toter for the automated collection garbage recycling and yard waste carts and authorizing the payment in an amount not to exceed $1,800,000. Any discussion? Or are you here for questions, or do you have a presentation, Mike?
Just have a quick presentation, just to update you from Tuesday. So I won't read all the numbers to you, but the left side are those that are that have actually filled out was the actual numbers that we're at today. And then the graph that you can see, a lot of that is not only people that are submitting online and doing it, but also staff taking the postcards and entering that data. So you can see, like, yesterday, we got quite a few in. So you can see how it's ebbing and flowing, but the deadline for that is the 15th. So just want to bring counsel along with that. I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
So any discussion among the council members or questions for Mike? Go ahead.
I have a quick question. I couldn't remember what was in the I had a misunderstanding a little bit, I think, of in the packet for delivery. So the delivery time is after we approve this, that how many weeks was it?
Um, hopefully.
Six to seven weeks, well, to produce, and then another two to three weeks to. Yep.
So when do we think we would receive those estimated? Like, what month would that be?
The plan is to implement this in September.
Right. We would get the carts before that, correct?
Correct. Yes, like, two weeks before. Two weeks before, I think, is what we was our target date.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Okay, any discussion on this motion? Okay, all those in favor of approving Resolution Number 31973, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. This time we have a public hearing regarding the 2024 Storm Intake Project. And do we have a presentation?
We do.
Go ahead.
So first of all, I want to say this is a great showing of how departments can work together. So this was a combination of engineering, public service, and parks. So there's two main issues that we're addressing. The one on the west is right in front of Villas. There's an intake there that is failing because of the amount of traffic on Seventh Avenue. That's not something that we're equipped to set up all that traffic control to do that. And so that's kind of shown here on the left side. So setting up all that traffic control to move everybody over so that we can get in there and do that work on that intake. The other one is on Sixth Avenue, so it's right before you enter the 27th Roundabout. And in that area, we have a lot of granular material that actually washes from that existing parking lot and goes on the trail and goes on the street. And so what we're going to do there is add an intake and pave some of that area to stop that, so we don't have the gravel that keeps coming onto the trail. So the combination of public service and parks and engineering, a great thing that we can now work together and combine those projects. So we put those two projects out to bid. We did get four bidders. The low bid came in from Eastern Iowa excavating at $31,123.10, which was 89% of the engineer's estimate, has a late start date of 9/3/24, 12 working days, and $300 per day in liquidated damages. And we are recommending approving plans and bids.
Okay. Stick around for questions when we make the motion. At this time, the public hearing is open. If anyone is here to address the city council on this measure, either in favor or in opposition, please, please come forward. Well, as the staff, have we received any comments outside the meeting?
I have not received any.
Mike? Can you say that into the mic, please?
We have not.
Okay, please note that for the record. We'll close the public hearing and proceed to the resolution.
Mayor, I move to approve the project calendar regarding the 2024 Storm Intake Project as follows. Resolution Numbers 31974 through 31975.
Second.
I'm moved and seconded to approve the project calendar for the 2024 Storm Intake Project, including Resolutions 31974 and 31975. Discussion on the motion, questions for Mike?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Mike, on that last overhead, what's that location again?
So the left side is right in front of Villas. There's an intake there. It's either right on the right side or left side, but it's right in front of Villas on the south side of Seventh Avenue.
Okay, and the location on is?
And then, so that's on Seventh Avenue. The one on the E on the right side is actually on Sixth Avenue. So this is the curve going into the Roundabout at 27th Old Marion Iron. And so there's just a lot of loose rock that comes, and then we would get a heavy rain, comes out, and it sits on the trail, and you can actually see right here that rock sitting there. So it's a constant maintenance issue for the Parks Department to try and maintain.
Okay, and that was the one I was interested in. So there's an elevation drop from that parking down to the trail.
Yep, so we're going to add a curb and gutter and intake, so that we're stopping that from happening.
Great, okay. I just was just wanting to better understand that situation. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion or questions? All those in favor of approving the project calendar for the 2024 Storm Intake Projects, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I make a motion to remove Resolution Number 31943 regarding a no parking zone on both sides of 15th Avenue from the table, table to 5/23/24.
Second? It's removed by Councilmember Brant, seconded by the Mayor Protam to remove Resolution Number 31943 from the table, which is regarding a no parking zone on both sides of 15th Avenue. Discussion on the motion to remove from the table. All those in favor of removing Resolution Number 31943 from the table placing it on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, move to approve Resolution Number 31943, approving the establishment of a no parking zone on both sides of 15th Avenue from Seventh Street to Eighth Street, tabled 5/23/2024.
Second? It's moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 31943, proving the establishment of a no parking zone on both sides of 15th Avenue from Seventh Street to Eighth Street. Any discussion? Mike, did you have any comment, or are you just here for questions? Discussion?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. So Mike, I was the one that asked us to be tabled, and I was, you know, hoping to discover some line of logic that I could, you know, I guess, avoid doing this in this particular location. But the policy that you shared with me was absolutely clear, and it's a relatively new policy. And also, the TAC eval was absolutely clear, and there wasn't any, I guess, engineering reason that I could ascertain that would say, you know, gives us some latitude in this particular location. But I do want to just generally, for the record, register my concern that in the absence of having some predefined criteria by which we can evaluate some of these tight areas or areas that might not warrant this treatment, in the absence of having that, you know, I can't think of any reason why that would cause me now to vote against this. But you represented to us, there's going to be some areas of town that are going to be, just because of their geography and the dimensions of some locations, we're going to be faced with some hard decisions, I think, in the future. And so I guess I'm just interested in, from a process perspective, that we do have some criteria, at least that we give some contemplation to, that might warrant, well, in this spot, you know, three or four checkboxes satisfy that we might want to let that one stand as is. That's all I'm really just thinking. It's a process concern. I just maybe to more simply state it, I couldn't fabricate a reason why we should not do this. Okay, so I have some residents that I need to follow up with. I talked to them initially, and I did explain that, you know, this evaluation really is predicated on emergency services and operations of big equipment in those tight areas. So, I mean, logically, I think they appreciate that, but you know, they still had the desire to only have parking on one side. So anyhow, that's my story. Thank you.
Yeah, so just to give council awareness, the next segment that we'll be doing is cul-de-sacs, and those streets that lead up to the cul-de-sacs, just because with going with automated right now, we just can't make the corner in those cul-de-sacs. The area that we do after that may, I haven't looked, but eventually, when we do the old part of town, that's where we're going to have to have a lot of those discussions. And that's where we'll sit down with fire, and we'll have to come up with a plan of, okay, maybe this street's only 20 foot wide, but so are the three streets adjacent to it. So we're going to have to say, this street's no parking at all. We're going to allow one side on this street to give a happy medium, so that there's, we can both do the response that we need to, and also provide for adequate parking.
Yeah, yeah, we're trying to, you know, map our thinking into stuff that was done 40, 50 years ago. So anyway, appreciate the work on that. Thanks.
Okay, any other discussion on that item? All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 31943, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. The next item is a public hearing regarding Bowman Meadows Ninth Edition Preliminary Site Development Plan for the property located east of Archer Drive. Public hearing is public hearing is now open. Do we have a presentation?
I can provide a brief one. This is a revised preliminary site development plan. And then the next three items on the agenda will all be related to the same general area. This is a fairly significant revision, approved several years ago. It was 14 duplex units and one single-family unit in the area highlighted there. The applicants have gone another direction, and they're looking to do 11 single-family detached homes in the same space, so a little reduction in the overall density of the area. This will be an extension of Archer Drive into a cul-de-sac with two private named driveways, to serve as primary access to the eight total lots in that development. This was reviewed and approved by the planning and zoning commission. With the private drives, or private driveways, they are named. We just talked about, Mike had just mentioned, no parking in the cul-de-sacs. This bulb will have no parking, of course, for emergency services as well as garbage collection. Two options have been presented to the developer. One will be allow them to bring their bins down the drive, long driveways, to the cul-de-sac, or they can do it through an HOA. It's the garbage collection. So there are some options there. This was identical layout to what was previously approved, just a different housing product being proposed. So again, the planning and zoning commission did recommend approval.
Okay, public hearing is now open. If anyone is here to address council with regard to this measure, either in favor or in opposition, please come forward. Okay, seeing no one's coming forward, we will first ask the staff if we've received comments outside the meeting.
I have not received any.
I have not.
Okay, thank you. Please note that for the record, we'll close the public hearing. And for the next three resolutions, I will turn over the meeting to the Deputy Mayor Protam.
Deputy Mayor Protam, I move to approve Resolution Number 31976, approving the Bowman Meadows Ninth Edition Preliminary Site Development Plan for property located east of Archer Drive, Marion, Iowa. This is brought by Midwest Development Company.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 31976, approving the Bowman Meadows Ninth Edition Preliminary Site Development Plan. Is there any discussion?
Just a question. Dave, adjacent to this Archer Drive to the east and maybe a little bit to the southeast, is there still a plan to have the multi-billion building apartment complex that we heard about, what, a year and a half, two years ago?
Yeah, that's directly to the east of Archer Drive across Alberta Road. That's still the intent. They're just not ready for it yet.
Okay, but so I just wanted to know sort of what the general status was, since this was adjacent. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor for approving Resolution Number 31976, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Your Honor? I move to approve Resolution Number 31977, approving the Bowman Meadows Ninth Edition Final Site Development Plan for property located east of Archer Drive, Marion, Iowa. This is for Midwest Development Company.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 31977, approving the Bowman Meadows Ninth Edition Final Site Development Plan for property located east of Archer Drive, Marion, Iowa. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of approving Resolution Number 31977, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Seeing none, motion carries.
Deputy Mayor Protam, I move to approve Resolution 31978, approving the Bowman Meadows Ninth Edition Final Platoon Memorandum of Agreement for Property Located East of Archer Drive, Marion, Iowa, Midwest Development.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 31978, approving the Bowman Meadows Ninth Edition Final Platoon Memorandum of Agreement for Property Located East of Archer Drive, Marion, Iowa. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Back to the mayor.
Thank you. This time, we have our second public forum, which is the time set aside for comments from members of the public on any topic. And again, we remind everyone to adhere by the rules that were right at the beginning of the meeting. If anyone is here to address council, please come forward.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, my name is Bruce Alkema. I live at 2880 Indian Creek Road. Right across the street from Indian Creek Elementary. Okay, been there 32 years, first house on the block. Okay. I got a notification from the city that I was now responsible for mowing the parking that is directly across the street from the grade school, right? I've never done that. I don't know who was doing it. But I was taking care of my property, and then that was being done for 32 years. Okay, you got a new plan going on, you're fixing some things, you're moving some stuff, right? But here's my problem. I don't know if you got the photographs that I took, I sent to the, okay. If you can look at that, you all know the intersection I'm talking about, right? Where my corner is, that stop sign, and there's there's a hill that's like that, okay? And that goes for probably another 15 to 20 yards down the street, okay? Whoever was mowing that easement or that parking wouldn't hand mow the stop sign with the hill, the mountain, right? So I've been doing that for 32 years. Okay, I just turned 70. I don't think I'm going to do that anymore. Particularly because that's a busy intersection. That's a killer intersection. And I've got one hand on a stop sign, one hand on a mower, and about 32 cars waiting to run me over the next time. You know what I'm saying? So I'd like to think that we could reach some kind of a an understanding that I, you know, I've been opening that corner. I've done the snow removal, get the kids to school for 32 years. I'm a nice guy. You know, I'm workable, but I can't do it anymore. I'm just too old. And I appreciate your time. Could look into that for me, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Your Honor, can I just comment? Sure. Yeah.
Sir?
Just, just go ahead. Yeah, I just wanted to comment. I don't live too far from you.
Yep.
And I have familiarity with your corner. I just, just for my own situational awareness, I'd like to stop by sometime and just take a look at it as well.
If you would, please.
Yeah, okay.
You put an eyeball on it, it changes things immensely.
I go through there, but the concerns that you've raised just, you know, haven't resonated with me, just going, passing through that intersection, so.
Everybody goes through that intersection.
Yeah, it seems like that's, yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Thank you, Grant. Anyone else here to address city council on any topic, please come forward. Okay? Seeing that no one else is coming forward, we will close the public forum and proceed to council comments. We'll start with Councilmember Jensen. Mr. Harper?
You know, I was trying to follow in your footsteps a little bit today, Your Honor. I met with a student who's part of the Linmar Future Business Leaders of America program. And he and several other students have been working on a project, I think, with parks about promoting, creating a video to promote our trails. And so I met with one of their, one of the project members and took some drone shots of Indian Creek Trail. And I just, you know, one of the things that I think is kind of the hidden gem of our community is how interested some of our young people are in our amenities. So I just wanted to pass that along. It was kind of fun today, and I did find out that, given the brisk winds that we had, I found out the physical limitations of my drone, so I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, last week I had the privilege of taking a couple of classes from the Linmar Venture Program, the Behavioral Science Track, to the Lynn County Mental Health Access Center. So we did it two days. Got the tour led by Aaron Foster out there, the director, and we got to talk a lot about the services they provide, the community partnerships with Foundation Two and liaisons here in our city. Got to see the facility, of course, and, you know, they had questions about rules and procedures and barriers that Iowa has with mental health services. So it was really cool to be able to talk about everything from services to legislation and impact on residents all around the state of Iowa. And what was really cool about it is the first ever student groups getting tours out there, because it's an adult-only access center. So they got to kind of see a different part of the community, and kids that are specifically interested in behavioral science got to see that and ask questions and realize that there's this important facility in our county. So that was just a really cool experience, and thank you to the Linmar staff and teachers and to the students for taking part and asking good questions.
Brent? Mr. Sterned?
Thank you.
For my part, since the last meeting, I had the chance to be a guest on the Z12.9 morning show to promote Marion and talk about all the great things that we're doing. And that was a lot. Um, that was a lot of fun. I've met with several, uh, developers about potential new projects, a new hotel owner in town. Um, met with, uh, Mark Sekman regarding a broader development vision for the community. And today I attended the large investor meeting at the Economic Alliance. Um, since it's, uh, graduation season, party season, um, I, and with, with, with a high school senior graduating, I was invited to about 50 of them. And I've been, attended a lot of them over the last couple of weeks. And, uh, I, I, I have to say that it was very enjoyable because at almost every one of the parties, someone made a point to come and find me. They were not necessarily from Marion, from the region, from Cedar Rapids, from everywhere. And were just eager to tell me how pleased they were with the direction of the city of Marion, the things that they see us doing, the amenities, the, the quality of life, the improvements, the progress, the, um, improvement in, in curb appeal. Of course, Uptown is, is a favorite, uh, topic for people to talk about. Um, the region, uh, definitely notices what's going on in Marion and they see us as, as leading the way. Um, I, I have the privilege and honor of, of, of being the one who receives those comments, but I like to share them with all of you. Um, so that you know that your work matters, that your work really, uh, is beyond your daily task that you're doing in each of your, uh, roles. Um, it's, it's, we're creating something very special here that is being recognized in the region and across the state and across the country. Um, very soon I'm going to be, um, uh, a guest on a podcast, uh, with someone from Washington DC. Uh, so we are being noticed and, uh, your work matters, so thank you very much. Finally, before we, uh, I want to congratulate, uh, our city manager, Ryan Waller, on graduating from the Leadership Iowa Program. This is his recognition, uh, piece here. Uh, very proud of Ryan for the work he's doing, uh, to again, put Marion on the map across the state or in, in just one more way, uh, and taking a leadership role. Uh, so congratulations to Ryan. If he didn't get a share in the treats that, that he has, uh, please see him after, afterwards and congratulate him in person. So thank you all for, uh, being here, for all the work that you do. And we'll see you next time. The meeting's adjourned. Oh, no, we have, we have a closed session. So.
Mayor, I move to adjourn to a closed session regarding litigation as permitted under sections 21.51C of the Code of Iowa as exempt session regarding collective bargaining as permitted under section 20.173 of the Code of Iowa. This will be two separate matters.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation as permitted under section 21.51C of the Code of Iowa and an exempt session regarding collective bargaining as permitted under section 21.173 of the Code of Iowa. Uh, may we have the legal counsel's statement, please?
Um, yes, I have analyzed, uh, both of the matters that are being moved into closed session and exempt session. And I believe that they are both properly being closed and/or exempt.
Thank you for that. Any discussion before we vote? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Miskman?
Yes.
Mayor Abu Asli?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Sterned?
Yes.
Thank you for being here. We're now adjourned to closed session. We'll return to open session when-